PM, we will start today's Little Rock Planning Commission meeting. Thank you. We have a roll call.
Are they saying anything?
We're waiting on the roll call. Can you hear us, Mr. Latour? Can you hear us? We can hear you. Roll call vote. Commissioner Vogel? Here.
I don't hear anything. Are they doing anything? Good.
We are doing a roll call, Mr. Latour. We're gonna text him.
Commissioner McDonald, can you hear us?
I'm trying.
I can't hear anything either, Paul.
We can hear y'all, Commissioner McDonald and Commissioner Latour. Hello? Hello? We're getting progress. Came out a little hot out of the gate.
Scott, 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 Scott.
Broke too soon. Okay. I think we're okay. Paul, Alicia, can you hear us? Thumbs up if you can hear us. Paul, Alicia, can you hear us, Commissioner?
Yes, I can hear.
Excellent. Thank you all. We had the button pushed incorrectly here. Okay, with that said, we'll bring the meeting to order. And we'll have a roll call.
Benton?
Here.
Brooks?
Present.
Hart?
Here.
Haynes?
Here.
Hodge? Latour? Latour?
Here. Here.
McDonald?
Present.
Thomas? Vickers?
Here.
Vogel?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Great. And we have a motion to approve the prior meeting's minutes.
Move that we approve the meeting from the last commission meeting.
Second.
And we have a roll call vote.
Benton?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Haynes? Hodge? Latour?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Thomas? Vickers?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Yeah, it passes.
We have a reading of the consent agenda, please, for November 10th.
Little Rock Planning Commission Consent Agenda for November 10th, 2022. Item number one is consent withdrawal. Item four, Z9734. Rezoning from R3 to C3 at 3400 John Barrow Road. The applicant submitted a letter to staff on October 26, 2022, requesting deferral of this application to the December 8, 2022 agenda. Staff supports the denial request, I mean, the defer request, excuse me. A number two consent deferral. Item AS-86709. Miramont Circle, preliminary platte located at the west end of Miramont Boulevard, west of Chenal Valley Drive. The applicant failed to send track notifications to the surrounding property owners as required. Staff recommends the application be deferred to the December 8, 2022 agenda. Item B, Z9714. Haynes Bed and Breakfast Special Use Permit located at 6901 Shamrock Drive. The applicant failed to send notifications to the surrounding property owners as required. Staff recommends the application be deferred to the December 8, 2022 agenda. Item five. Z5502J. This is West Canis Storage, a revised PDC. West of 17,00301 Canis Road. The applicant failed to provide responses to comments from staff as requested. Staff recommends this application be deferred to the December 8, 2022 Planning Commission agenda. Item six, Z-7069D. This is Tisdale Properties Self-Storage, PDC. Located at 8500 West Markham Street. The applicant failed to provide responses to comments from staff as requested. Staff recommends this application be deferred to the December 8, 2022 Planning Commission agenda. Consent deferred, continue, page two. Item eight, Z9733. This is Belle Chevrolet Commercial, PCD. Located at the northwest corner of Highway 10 and Interstate 430. The applicant submitted a letter to staff on October 4, 2022, requesting deferral of this application to the December 8, 2022 agenda. Staff supports the defer request. The next number is three. These are the items on consent approval. Item number one, S-1424M. Seana Lake Subdivision Phase One. This is revised preliminary platte located at the southeast corner, excuse me, southwest and northwest of Seana Lake Drive, west Lake Lane intersection. Staff recommends approval of the requested preliminary platte, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D and E, and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Item two, Z6717A. Epperson Daycare Family Home. This is a special use permit located at 513 Thayer Street. Staff recommends approval of the special use permit to allow a daycare family home at 513 Thayer Street, subject to the following conditions. One, compliance with the site and location criteria in Section 36-54E3. Two, there is to be no signage beyond that permitted in single-family zones. Three, outdoor activities including playground use are to be limited to daylight hours. Item three on the consent agenda is land use. Land use plan amendment, West Little Rock Planning District. Residential high-density, two neighborhood commercial located at 2410 Glover Street. Staff recommends approval of the amendment to the neighborhood commercial. Item 3.1. Z-3250B. Rezoning from PDC to C1. This is also at 2410 Glover Street. Staff recommends approval of the requested C1 zoning. Item seven, page three, consent agenda approval. Consent approval, item seven, Z9732, PVK Development. This is a POD located at 15,501 Canis Road. Staff recommends approval of the request subject to compliance with the comments and conditions as outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F, and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. The last item on the consent agenda is item number 11. This is the 2023 Planning Commission calendar.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move that we approve the consent agenda, including all staff comments and conditions.
Second.
We have a roll call vote.
Benton?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Hodge? Latour?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Thomas? Vickers?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes. All right, moving on to the regular agenda. Item nine. Thank you. We... Oh, yeah, that's right. If anyone here was on the consent agenda, you have passed, and you do not have to stay around unless you would like to listen to the regular agenda, items nine and 10, and 12 and 13. Thank y'all for coming. Expect a crowded house next time. Okay, I guess we'll move on to the regular agenda.
Item number nine. This is the 14524 Highway 10 Advanced Grading Variance. Located near 14524 Cantrell Road. Proposal: applicant is requesting an extension to the previous expired variance from the land alteration regulations to advanced grade by clearing and filling approximately 2.96 acres of a 10.67 acre property on the north side of Cantrell Road, just north of existing commercial developments at 14524 through 14810 Cantrell Road. The variance would allow staff to reissue a grading permit for the advanced grading activities within eminent construction. Field material is proposed to be hauled to the site from a nearby lot located on 15122 Cantrell Road. The filled area will slope to a natural grade and no steeper than two to one. The applicant proposes to clear and fill only the portion of the property identified on the plan in which part of the fill is located within a 100-year floodplain and determine not to be within a wetland. The applicant's intention is to maintain the same undisturbed buffers, diversion ditches, etc. Analysis. The applicant proposed to fill the dense tree covered 2.96 acres of the proposed approximate 10.67 acre property. Part of the property is located within a 100-year floodplain with regulatory floodway located in the northeast portion of the property to be disturbed. Access is proposed from the existing private street off Cantrell Road to the south of the subject property that cuts through the existing commercial development. The applicant has indicated on the grade and land alteration permit application that grading and land alteration will be completed, and the site will be stabilized within one year of the issuance of the grading permit. Applicant has provided in the growth control plan showing the steel fence, diversion ditches, and rock check dams, and other erosion controls. The grading plan shows 2.96 acres of the total 10.67 acres. The grading plan shows 2.96 acres of the total 10.67 acres to be filled approximately 15 feet in elevation with two to one slopes to transition to the existing grades. Applicant proposes to maintain the existing buffers, diversion ditches, et cetera, on the property. The property will be graded to sheet flow stormwater and not pond on the property, and the sheet flow stormwater will then run off the two to one slopes and diversion ditches that will drain and discharge to Esan Creek at the northwest corner of the proposed disturbed 2.96 acre site. Maintenance of erosion controls, detention facilities, and construction entrances will occur as needed during the grading period. Within 14 days of completion of the final grading, the disturbed area will be graded within six inches of topsoil and seeded and vegetated with native grasses. When vegetation is established, the erosion control devices can then be removed. Recommendation, staff recommends denial of the requested extension of the great advanced grading variance due to the applicant's documented history of multiple violations and not appearing to the city's land alteration regulations and flood damage prevention regulations at this site.
The applicant I see in agent here, would y'all like to discuss your application?
In the reading, it sounded like we were going to disturb the floodway, and we're not going to disturb the floodway at all. And I've also gotten a conditional letter of map provision from FEMA, getting permission that it's acceptable to put the fill, and we showed them a plan, and I was going to hand that out to all y'all so y'all could have that and look at it, if you don't mind.
Please. Yes, can you state your name, Mr. Griffin?
Jess Griffin, Five Kingston, LaRocque. I just wanted to show y'all that we did get approval from FEMA to put this in, some fill into floodplain. And I'm not aware of any citations or violations that we have gotten on that site. We've already had a grading permit there, and we're just asking now to extend the grading permit further back to the north. We are maintaining a 25-foot buffer from the floodway. I believe the city requires a 25-foot floodway easement, so we wanted to make sure that we kept a 25-foot area. The silt fence will be placed there to distinguish between that and maintain a 25-foot buffer there. So we'll be 25-foot from the floodway, not the floodplain. And we're basically, there was a 50-foot buffer that we had between the neighbors when we had the original grading permit approved, and we want to maintain that same 50-foot area where we won't clear or touch the 50-foot next to the neighborhood there. And I think that's about it. I mean, y'all have any questions?
Yeah, when was the advanced grading permit issued?
Probably, I don't know, a year and a half ago, two years ago. Jamie, do you have that?
It is that long ago, time flies.
Looks like it was issued in October 1st of 2021. Excuse me, April 1st of 2021, correction.
Just about 18 months ago. All right, do any other commissioners have any questions?
Just of staff, if we're...
Please.
Yeah, I, so, the recommendation of denial comes with a comment about some documented history of multiple violations. So I guess I'm just asking, if we don't extend this, what's the state of the property now, and is it, are we midway through grading? Is the property stable? And what are the specific reasons for not extending the grading variance? I think the applicant's bringing in dirt from another site, so I don't, if this is just a matter of timing, then I would be inclined to allow this to continue since we approved it originally. But if it's a matter of the applicant repeatedly and consistently violating the city's policies, then I'd like to hear about that.
Well, in the recent past, staff had to enforce on this property to unauthorized construction and trash being dumped on site, and part of it being in the 100-year regulatory floodplain on the eastern part of the property. That includes issuing a stop work order to get them to comply. Whether it was their staff or trespassers, we're not sure, but that's been recently enforced on earlier this year on this property.
Okay, so is that, is that kind of the main crux of it, that there was something that was, that got off into the, into the floodplain?
Part of the unauthorized dumping of construction debris and trash. Yes, sir.
Okay.
But also, if I could just interject, the land alteration variance, the intent is for, to allow a contractor to go in and construct if it's, you know, not, building is not imminent, but it is not made to continually be issued to grade a site for long periods of time. That's a different issue. A lot of times it's used, for us currently, for the city, when a subdivision is being built, and they're using for different phases of a subdivision to come in, and they may have to grade another phase, that's an example, and use the dirt to balance the site, so they don't have to haul a lot of dirt around everywhere. That's just an example. So, other, other deal is other than just what we explained about the notices and the stop work orders issued on that, it's also the fact that it cannot be, you know, the intent is not to be continual. It is to have a start and an end, you know, of the permitting timeframe.
And with this, does it have an end? I did not see that when I read the comments from staff. Are we mandating that this end soon? I mean, is that part of what staff is stating, is that this advanced grading permit will end on a certain date?
Well, the first one did, it ended, and any grading permit that we issue will end on a certain date. Was there a requested timeframe on the application?
One year.
My other question was, sorry, I forget, my other question was if, are we midstream in a grading project? So if, so if we stop now and said, applicant, you can't, you can no longer bring fill onto the site, is the site at a point where it's stabilized and it, or is it, is it at a point where stopping at this point would be detrimental to the neighborhood?
Can you restate your question?
Yeah, I was just asking if, so, the applicant's not finished with his, with his grading project, okay? So he got an advanced grading permit, he's clearly not finished because he's asking for an extension for another permit. So if we say to the applicant now, hey, stop, don't do anything else on the site, is the site stable? Is it in a place where we can leave it for an indefinite period of time until the development is done?
I believe so, yes.
Chair.
Yes, yes, sir.
To the applicant, what was the reason for the delay in getting the variance or the grading completed, knowing that you had it within a year of the timeframe?
Extension of area?
Yeah, we, let me just tell you a little history on this project. I bought seven acres about 10 or 15 years ago. That's behind the Pinnacle Station Shopping Center, which I presently own. And we had that approved for 45,000 square feet of office warehouse at that time. And then I added an additional four acres that was Dr. Lowe owned, which is the property that we're, we were filling. And so what we are trying to do is to combine the two properties. There's, we haven't gone far enough back to the north to complete that because we still have trees up out there, and there also, we have trees between the two properties. There's a big ditch right there that's probably got snakes and everything else in it. I mean, it's really pretty ugly looking, that we want to fill that in, so that we could be able to develop the property. We've had this property now for over 10 years, except for the four acres, we've had that for probably six or seven years. So we've had it for a long period of time, and we want to develop it. And we, you have to also think about where this property is located. We've had a lot of people that want to come in and dump on this property. Most, a lot of it, most of it is not because we're asking them to dump, it's just because they need a place to come dump their load, and a lot of times, they dump large chunks of concrete and asphalt and other things in there, which we would say, no, we don't want anything like that in there. But they do it, you know, they do it, they don't really ask our permission. And so we really, I don't know, the only thing we've had that we, that we, about three or four years ago, we, I think the city was surveying it or something, and they saw that some of the, some of the dirt that had been dumped out there had been on a, maybe it was in the floodplain, or on the, and there's a water easement out there. So we did have to, you know, Vince Floyone was head of public works at that time, he called us and told, asked us to come out there. So to remove that, I didn't know about it, because it's, we weren't intending to develop it at that time, and so we went out there, we saw that was true, so we did what he wanted to, you know, he told us to do. We had to go out there in about the next two or three days, he took it all out, and that was it. We just, we did what the city asked us to do, and we were on good terms with them, and that sort of thing. So the only other thing that I know on this property that we had an issue with was there was someone that had put some concrete out there that the city, that the neighborhood saw, and they didn't, they didn't want that there, so we had to get someone to come out there to remove the concrete, and it was a big pile of, it wasn't, it wasn't, I mean, it was noticeable, it was back from the front, it wasn't, it wasn't noticeable from the street or anything like that. But, excuse me. So those are the only two instances, and we've, and when they requested that we do that, we did it properly. So there's not numerous, that was in the comment, numerous violations, I would say that's totally untrue, totally untrue. And the only one we had on the other property was, well, we can deal with that one later, but that's only two things that I know of, that we, and when we, that we had a conflict with the city, or they'd ask us to move it, they just had someone call us and say, can you get this out here? And we said, yes, and we did. So we've tried to live up with all those ordinances and try to do the right thing, and so I'm just really kind of dismayed, a little shocked, that they would say there's numerous, because there's not numerous complaints that we've had on that. This is very contentious type property, because it does front to a border to some residences out there, and, but when I bought it, those residences weren't there, and I've dealt with Mr. Keith Wingfield, which is here tonight, and he has told me that he had no problem with what we had planned to do development-wise on it. So we're just trying to complete the development. We can't just let it sit there and not do anything. There's, it's going to be developed. It's going to be developed. So we need to go ahead and proceed, and let me develop it, and I'm going to come back probably in the next 30 days with some type of development plan to get this, to get this deal done. But we have, we have a lot in the fifth, the other lot that we had that we're bringing tonight, we were taking dirt, shell dirt mainly, because it's a very rocky site, and we were taking that over to the other property so we could fill that in. We had a hill, and we're taking that dirt over to the other, which has got a big hole. So we're just trying to be able to, you know, cut and fill, and that's what we'd like to do. We appreciate if you give us the opportunity to go ahead and complete this, instead of letting, making us stop and start, and stop and start. That's just really hard to do, complete a project when you're stopping and starting. We just didn't have enough time, and so we just need some additional time to get that, to get that done.
Thank you, applicant. I have a quick question for staff. So we issued the original advanced grading permit back in April of 21. It runs for how many months?
This written, the grading permit issued in April was for six months.
We extended it?
Correct.
In October of 21?
Not since October, to my knowledge.
So we extended it when?
In April was the extension.
For how many months?
Six.
So April of '22, we extended it, or April of '21?
Let me pull the permit to confirm.
Okay, let's give a timeline real quickly, because I don't see it in the staff comments here, and that's one of the questions that I have been trying to understand, is when did we issue the original advanced grading permit? How we issued an extension?
So I have a question while you're...
Yeah, please.
So you made mention about the taking soil from one place and covering the ditch. Will that cause any drainage issues? Are we aware of how that water will drain?
We sent the plan in, we didn't get any comments back from staff, but no, we're not filling in the ditch, there's still a ditch that's going to remain between the two properties. We've got to have, we're looking at just one, he owns two parcels, and we're just working on one of the parcels, and there won't be any problems with drainage or stopping drainage or any of that. Part of the time factor, too, is the sheer magnitude of volume of dirt that is required to take to the site.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I think, I do think the timeline's important. You know, if, if work has been constant and steady for a period of time, and the applicant just needs more time, then that's one thing. If, if this is a, sort of a change in the scope of the project, you know, that, that's another thing. And then if, if the applicant has not been complying with the, the initial rules and regulations of his grading plan, that's a whole nother, that's another issue, and I don't, I'm not 100% clear. I do understand, though, that there needs to be, on something like grading, it doesn't just run into perpetuity, right? Because there's a neighborhood around it, and they want to know when, when this stops and starts. So I'm not so much opposed to an extension of some point, but it would have to stop it somewhere, right? You'd have to say, I'm finished by X date. Or, I did hear the applicant say he's going to bring a proposed development in, and that would, that would cure all of this if that occurred, then we would know exactly what is going to be proposed on the property, and we would, the planning commission would then have something to review and approve, as opposed to just, you know, taking dirt to the site into perpetuity. So, but the timeline, I do think is important, because I'm a little confused on what, what, it looks like there was a year, it looks like in the applica, it looks like in the write-up, there was a one-year period that the grading permit covered, but I'm unclear on that. on that. Yeah, it says here the site will be stabilized within one year of the issuance of the grading permit.
Mr. Chairman? It seems like you have, you have two projects that are tied together because the property at Cantrell and Rumel Road, which is the one we've, we've hassled over so long, and the City Board ended up turning down. If I hear him right, he wants to take the dirt from that site, which we have not approved on anything yet, and put it on this site. So I guess my question is simply logistic, if you approve it for this site and turn it down, which would probably be the smart thing, on the other site, what does that do? But I'm along with Commissioner Hart, and that is if you, if he comes forth with a plan and whatnot, problem solved, because the grading will be part of the plan he's going to put in. But we've been over this project for at least the last five or six years.
I agree. It's been an ongoing project, and I think that's where everybody is, is we need to have conclusion so that we know what the, you know, action is going to be, not just an indefinite.
The conclusion is simple. He's to come forth with a plan, tell us when it's going to start, let us approve or disapprove the entire plan, not piecemeal.
Do y'all have staff, the dates in question of when we originally approved the advanced grading permit?
I'm having difficulty finding the original permit, but I believe it was sometime in 2020, and then they applied for the extension in March of 2021 and got approved in April.
Chair, if I may.
Yes, sir, please.
As an applicant, how much time, how much more time would y'all need? If y'all had to give us a timeframe, what would that timeframe be?
We've requested one year, but if y'all were only willing to do six months, we're more than happy to agree to that time period. What we've done is we got, I mean, this, we've been battling on this property. We had a plan, we got it approved by the planning commission, denied at the board. We had another plan, approved at the planning commission, denied at the board. We had a grading permit, denied. We had another grading permit for a smaller amount of area, approved. Now we are asking to go further back on the property on this one piece, because we've already filled the piece that is essentially approved. So we're asking to do more fill further back on the property. But to develop the property, you've got to fill it and get it out of the floodplain, or you can't build houses, you can't build any kind of development in the floodplain, or you're going to, you know, it'll flood. So we've got to get the property to where it's actually even developed, and we can still be working on another plan to come back with y'all. But the problem is, we keep getting denied at the board. Y'all keep on accepting our plans, but the board, you know, there's a lot of politics there. So it's, it's been very difficult, and the neighborhood is a very active neighborhood next door. I would say that it says a lot that this is a very active neighborhood. They're not here complaining, or haven't seen anybody. Are there any cards pulled?
No cards were pulled today.
No cards pulled. And this neighborhood, if they're not coming, then they're okay with it, you know? Because they've come to every other deal, and they put a stop to us at every other deal, every time we go to the board to try to get a new plan developed. And so we're trying to move forward, and it's, it's difficult. And I know y'all are saying, okay, it's been this much time, but it, it, part of it is that we can't get the development approved either.
One other thing I want to mention that I just thought of is that when we went here the last time, the staff, I think, recommended that we not fill the entire site. So we, they only gave us, so we said, okay, we'll go with what they said. So we'll go with half the site, and that goes halfway back. So therefore, we were, we could have done this in a quicker and a more expeditious manner if we'd have been able to do the whole site at one time. But when you're having to go there and stop, then we don't, we, then we haven't had enough room, actually, from the other side on, on Highway 10, to bring any more over, because we've already used up the room that the staff told us and that we agreed to. So we had to stop there. So therefore, it has, it has dragged out. If we'd had the whole site, we could have gone in there, gotten it done, and been out of there. We don't like to take years and years just to fill a site up. We want to get it done. But we've been handcuffed, more or less, and not, and agreed, we agreed to do it, but it wasn't the best option. We would like to be able to go out there and go full bore and get this project completed and get out of everybody's hair down here, the neighborhoods and everywhere else. We want to do a great development, but we've been shackled by regulations and other things. So we just would request that you give us a little bit more room, a little bit more time, and I'll promise you, we will go in there and get it completed.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
I have a motion.
Excuse me. I move for the approval of item LA 2022-01, including all staff comments and conditions except the recommendation of denial.
So everybody's aware, we vote in affirmative, so if you vote yes, you vote for the approval, you vote no, you vote for the denial, correct, Mr. Collins?
That is correct.
May we have a roll call? Vote, please.
Benton?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Hodge? Latour?
No.
McDonald?
Yes.
Thomas? Vickers?
Yes.
Vogel?
No.
6-2, pass.
Okay, applicant, you have the next item on the agenda as well, which we, do we need to have a discussion about it? Because I think, as Mr. Latour said, it's pretty much part and parcel to this other property. So would y'all like to discuss it?
I think we do need to have a summarized reading.
Yes, for sure, a summarized reading.
So we can have it per, for the record, please.
Yes, for sure.
And then we can proceed from there.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Item 10, LA 2022-02, Cantrell West Development Advanced Grading Variance 15122, Highway 10. The applicant proposes to maintain the existing grading of three cleared acres of the approximately 3.37 acre property until construction commences in the future. The site currently has two access driveways along Cantrell Road closer to the east property line. The applicant has indicated on the grading land alteration permit application, that grading and land alteration will be completed, and the site will be stabilized within one year of the issuance of the grading permit. The applicant has provided an urge control plan showing silt fence and rock check dams to mitigate sediment runoff and erosion on site. The grading plan shows the three acres of the total 3.37 acres to be maintained with 14 feet of cut and an elevation with three to one slopes to make, to transition to the existing grades. The applicant proposes to maintain the existing buffers, drainage swells, grades, et cetera, on the property. The property will be graded to sheet flow stormwater and not pond on the property. The sheet flow stormwater will flow into the existing drainage swell along the north side of Cantrell Road and a temporary detention pond in the southwest corner of the property. The temporary detention pond discharges to the existing drainage swell along the north side of the Cantrell Road. Maintenance of erosion controls, detention facilities, and construction instructions will occur as needed during the grading period. Within 14 days of completion of the final grading, disturbed air will be graded with topsoil and seeded with vegetated, seeded and vegetated with native grasses. And vegetation established erosion control devices will then be removed. Staff recommends denial of the request of an extension of the advanced grading variance due to the applicant's documented history of violations of not adhering to the city's land alteration regulations at this site.
Applicant, if you would like, you may speak, but applicant?
Yes, Griffin, 5 Kingston. This is the same permit that we've already had. All we're asking for is an extension of time on this one. And as far as I know, everything on the site is up to code and to the staff's acceptance at this point.
Thank you.
Any questions, I'm happy to answer.
I have a question for staff. If, if, if this property is not approved, this agenda item is not approved on, on this particular one, this just sits there and become a eyesore and dumping ground?
You're talking about the one, the previous one or the one we're hearing right now, which is at Rumel and Highway 10?
Rumel Highway.
No, they would still, the property owner would still have to hear the all the codes and regulations for any land disturbance, which would be, they have to stabilize the site, they'd also have to make sure that there's trees planting in the front for the buffer on Cantrell, for the DOD, and it'd have to be stabilized if any debris or any material, say vegetation dies, they'd have to replace, make sure it gets back in line for the codes and ordinances. So if somebody does come in, say it sets, and somebody does come in and dump material there, it would still be at the property's owner's responsibility to remove and remediate.
So who will determine the timeframe? If this is approved, who will determine the timeframe for how long they will have to get this done along with?
It's in the application. So what you approved for the other one, you did not modify it for a six-month term. It was the requested year, and I believe this one is the same timeframe.
I have a question for staff. Is there anything viable to policy of how many extensions you can get before you have to resubmit it or just resubmit a new application?
There is nothing in the codes that has that. It just says it has to come before the planning commission, and that's why I made the statement, the general intent was not to have somebody continually have excavation, and not that this is, and I'm not saying this to allude that they are, is, you know, then you get to more of a quarry aspect, and that really needs to be re-zoned and redone, not to where you use and sell dirt on a continual basis for other projects other than your own intent or what the development was. That's why it's tied to a development, something that's going to happen. And so I would, there's no timeframe in the codes, but there was something that you need to think about on a continual approval.
My only statement would be, you know, previous item was approved. This is the hill that's going to fill the valley of the previous property. So keep that in mind as we, you know, go through the applicant's, you know, commentary. Mr. Reese, would you like to say something else?
Oh, I just, there was a, I just want to say something. There was a citation that we received on this at one time, several months ago, in the summer, I think, and I just want to explain that because we were, they had written me a letter and said, we, that you need to do, you know, stabilize in this property and, and either put a fence, fence up our, our, our trees, but they only gave us, only gave us 14 days to do that work. So I said, okay, we're going to, we're going to put trees on there. So I called around, there was no trees, you know, I think we put hollies in there, but there was no trees around. We called, you know, Good Earth, and we, of course, my friend Steve Holmeyer, and I said, Steve, we need to put some trees up out there. Can you get, how about Bemis Tree Farm? He said, so, okay, let me check with them. So he called Bemis, he said, John, they'll be in in 30 days. And then I got to bring water to those so that you, so they'll be able to live, and then we'll go out there and put them in, we'll do all this for a certain amount of money. I said, okay, let's do it. Okay, so this took about two or three days from the time I got the letter, and then we called, we called the staff and asked them, said, can you please come out to the site so that we can talk to you about these things and see if we can get a little bit more time? We're working on getting it done. We're in the process, we've already got it working. And they said, okay. So they said, okay, what about 10 o'clock Monday? Okay. So we, Jeff, Jess and I went out there at 10 o'clock Monday, but no one showed up. So we go, okay, well, I guess they're not that interested in going out there. So we finally got, I think maybe, or someone's sick or something, anyway, they didn't show up. Finally, we got them to come back out there. They told us, okay, we, we told them, look, we were just trying to let them know that we were working on it. And because we couldn't call them on the phone, because they did not answer the phone. So we finally said, look, okay, email. So it was just really hard to do work and to try to work with people. You know how you work with people? Is you talk with them, back and forth, that's the conversation, and you try to get it done. We were just letting them know, we are working on it, please just give us a little bit of time. Don't, and don't just, you know, at the 14-day period. I mean, if you're really going to be, try to work with people, then you say, okay, John's going to, he's working on, he's already got it done, give him another couple of weeks. Because I couldn't get it done because there was no trees. So finally, you know, but they, and they sent me something that said, you know, you're going to have to appear in court. And I was going, that's really great. It won't work with me. And so now, I've got to go down to court, so I tried, I sent my attorney down there. And of course, by that time, it was already, I mean, we had it done in two more weeks. It took about 30 days, but they just should have given me a little time to get it done. They knew, I could have given them their number if they didn't want to believe me. But no worries, we had it going. We don't try to just thumb our nose at the city, city staff, or anyone else. We try to abide by the law. And we have great properties throughout this city and the city of Bryant, probably 10 shopping centers, office buildings, and we want to develop more. But it's very hard in the city of Little Rock to do anything. I'm just telling you.
Okay.
I'd appreciate it if you supply, because we have to have this property to fill the other one. So I would respectfully ask that you give me a little more time. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Any other questions by the commission? If not, may we have a motion?
I move for the approval of item LA 2022-02, including all staff comments and conditions.
Okay, there's a motion before us. Staff's recommendation is denial, correct?
Wait a minute, I read the wrong motion. Thank you. I apologize. I move for the approval of item LA 2022-02, including all staff comments and conditions except the recommendation of denial.
Okay.
Thank you.
Still voting in affirmative, so yes votes for extension, no vote against the extension, correct, Mr. Collins?
That is correct.
All right. We've had a second, I think.
Mm-hmm.
We have another second. All right.
Benton?
Call me, yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Hodge?
No.
Latour?
No.
McDonald?
Yes.
Thomas? Vickers?
Yes.
Vogel?
No.
6-2, motion passes.
Applicant, good luck at the City Board again. I hope we can get a plan and a completion of these projects very soon. Thank y'all for your patience, and I hope we can have a very amicable completion to this project. Been fun. All right, Director Collins, I think you have a couple more items on the regular agenda that are a little less controversial.
Well, the first one on there, and I hope everybody had an opportunity to read it, it's really a revision to the driveway, Streets and Sidewalks, Chapter 30. That is not underneath the planning commission's purview, but I thought it was prudent to bring it before the planning commission, just due to the fact that a lot of And part of that was really to increase the driveway width. Prior to then, maximum driveway width on a residential property was 20 feet, period. And so I said, well, you know, we have a lot of larger car garages. We need to try to accommodate that. And so we made that modification to really accommodate up to a two-car garage if it's within 50 feet of the right of way. So in other words, if you can't really get in and maneuver your vehicle, right, let's widen that driveway out. So we did increase it from 20 to whatever it would take to get into at least a two-car garage. What we've seen, and more dominant out west in new-built homes, that there's three-car garages coming in, so that width is increased. We're seeing more requests for a two-car garage and a smaller garage for golf carts or lawn mowers or other type of equipment that they would use, and even just three-car garages. And they're not putting these homes on large tract homes, they're putting them in subdivisions that would still be within that 50 feet. So we come into a, just an accommodation issue of what do we do? Do we deny them? Do we do this? So one of the proposals is, is we also need to try to keep everything equal across the board. We don't want to be approving something on a 50-foot-wide lot downtown that we're not doing on a 75-foot or 100-foot wide lot elsewhere in the city. And so we come up with this proposal to really be based on a percentage basis, right? That you're going to be allowed to have a driveway width based on a percentage of your lot frontage on the roadway. So our, so our proposal is that that percentage for residential driveways be 40% of the lots' street frontage, up to a maximum of 32 feet. And that's when we sat down and said, okay, what can we get these widths in? What is a garage door typically? Nine, 10 foot? Give them a little bit between the doors and try to accommodate that, but not necessarily have it where a driveway goes the entire width of the lot frontage. And so this will be presented to the Board hopefully in December, maybe January. There's no pressing need for it, but it is to try to accommodate larger homes, but also not, i- if we just put in a width, you could have a 50-foot-wide lot that would be able to have their driveway, the whole frontage of their lot. And that's not what the subdivision ordinance was intended to be, because you also need to account for off-street parking. You're not supposed to park in front of driveways and those types of aspects of it. So I think this may accommodate that. We've also sent this out for comments, and, and so with the developers, so we're hoping to get some more feedback from them. So that's this one. I'd be happy to answer any questions the, the commission may have.
So how is that feedback coming? Are, are we getting?
I don't have any yet, so we're going to send it out before we present it to the Board. I wanted to present it to, the process is let the Planning Commission see it, and then I'm going to get some feedback from the developers, and we may change it. I think we're still going to stick with the percentage. I think the, the final answer would be what would be the maximum width? If you have the lot width to do that.
Do you need us to make a motion to approve or?
No, there's no action for the Planning Commission. This is a chapter that is not in their purview.
Well, thank you for the education, and I think it's wise not to have a whole frontage be a driveway. But would we like to continue the discussion on the driveways or move on to home occupation? All right. Move along.
Chairman, I just had an observation on the driveway. I'm not opposed to it at all. But what about a home that, for instance, on a cul-de-sac where they may have a narrow front that fronts on the street, and perhaps the lot is pie-shaped, it's wide in the back and relatively small in the front?
Yeah, and, and the thing is, is a lot of those at the back, if it's, we also take what would be the average width of a lot, and we could also, and that's a good point, Commissioner Latour, to try to accommodate some of those. It depends on the width of the cul-de-sac, you know, that lot, you know, a lot of them are less than 50 feet. As they go around, they wouldn't accommodate a larger driveway anyway, so I, I think there's a way that we could put some of that stuff in there, so that's a good point.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Latour. Any other comments on the driveways from the commission? Hearing none, we'll move on to item 13, Home Occupation Ordinance Amendment.
Chair, members of the commission, the item 13 is really an amendment to the Home Occupation section of our code, which is in your purview, that's in the zoning code. And in 2021, the state passed an act, Act 659, which somewhat aligned with what we have, but there was some stuff in that law that we really needed to accommodate, and I was trying to, just working through, trying to figure out how we'd put that in. But they, the act was really to try to foster home occupations, and so you really want to kind of weigh that with what that home occupation is. Is it going to use additional water, sewage, parking, those type of issues? Is it going to be noisy? Because you also have the existing residences that are there that, if it comes in some type of nuisance, they want to look for that. And so what I did was, we went through, took the act, and we tried to align that act with what our codes are on there. And so if you'll look through there, you see where sections was stricken out and stuff that was added for it. Mainly, one of the main things on this that we have in our code is we do not allow accessory buildings or structures to be used as home occupations. It truly is, has to be inside the main structure of the home. And over years, we've seen that that's not necessarily the case, that it could, you could use an accessory structure, garage per se, for some type of home occupation. We're still looking for the same thing, so I think that alignment, the state didn't really have that in there, but I think when we align it with that, really, we're talking about the lot. And I've explained to several entities before, when we talk about that accessory building, that, you know, and this is all hypothetical examples, you know, there might be somebody coming in and wanting to do clock repair, right, in their garage. I think that's, that's good, right? Business goes great, and they start getting more, and instead of doing one a week, now they're doing two or three a day, and they're getting deliveries every day. It's that intensity is what we're looking for, not necessarily the location of being in the house or being out in the garage or other accessory structure. So I think we really tried to align that with there, and that's when I put, if you looked, the highlighted section, you know, odor, excessive dust, smoke, vibration, noise, light, heat glare, that's all to that nuisance area. So I think we needed to align it with that. We also removed any limitation on square footage. They didn't really have a square footage, you know, in the home occupation in the state law, so I thought it was prudent to remove a limitation on the square footage for that. And also the stock and trade where you're going to store your material because it's in an accessory building. And again, that clock repair type scenario, you might have more than 10% of your building where your occupation is in that accessory building for storage of your materials or what you're shipping and stuff. So I thought that was prudent to remove. And then also, the, you know, just removal of the requirement of the kitchen additional structure, sometimes that may be needed for that. That, that is different from actually a second dwelling as opposed to home occupation. So those are the main things that we changed, and you see the markers before you. So we would just request feedback and, and then I'd answer, answer any questions, and then would seek recommendations.
This will align the city ordinance to the state statute that was passed?
Yes, it was.
Recently, and keep the state or the city from being in any potential legal discrepancies that may arise?
That is correct.
Okay. Any questions by the commissioners?
Great changes. And again, it's in line with what we're doing already on the state level, so.
Hearing no comments, other than that, would there be a motion to recommend approval of this change in the ordinance?
I move that we change this part of the ordinance.
Second.
May we have a roll call? Vote, please.
Bettin?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Hodge?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Thomas?
Vickers? Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous.
Thank you. So just one quick point of clarification. Several items were deferred at the beginning of this meeting in the consent agenda. They will be held at this location. No change in venue. Some public questions were coming my way. If we were going to host a larger audience, were we going to change the venue? But that is not the case. We're staying right here. We're going to be here for our next meeting, and that is already published.
That is correct.
Okay, great. Any other public comments, seeing nobody in the audience anymore? I'm guessing that's not the case.
I just want to say thank you, Jamie, for sponsoring dinner next month.
Yes, well, pizza, brought in.
I think that's a good idea.
Well, with that said, meeting adjourned. Thank y'all.